Good evening. I'll call the Churchill County Planning Commission Workshop to order. The time is 6:30 PM, April the 30th, 2024. Is there any public comment? None heard. Verification and posting of the agenda?
Agenda has been posted in accordance with NRS and Churchill County Code.
Thank you. Due to there not being a quorum, this will not be an official meeting. It will be a discussion only. We'll go to item five of the agenda discussion, item A, and Legal Counselor, Mr. Sanford.
Everyone hear me? Perfect. Go with this. Alright, so I'll start with the PowerPoint here, which I titled Administrative TUP, but is in fact the whole group of things we're going to talk about today. First thing on the agenda is the temporary use permit stuff. So it's been talked about for many years with, I think, a look towards having at least the first blush of temporary use permits, which are the approvals for mobile homes and RVs to be placed more, lived in for more than 90 days. Actually, it might just be RVs. More than 90 days in any particular year. Come directly to the Director for an initial approval. And then have appeals come through the Board. There's a couple of reasons for that. One, removes a burden on applicants. I know it doesn't seem as major to us, but we consistently receive feedback across all of our Boards that coming before a Board is actually quite disconcerting to many members of the public. They're very concerned about what's going on and think that for some reason, this is making them special or that they're asking for something extraordinary, which isn't really the case. Second is that reduce, I'm going to say unnecessary, public meeting time, which isn't to say that they're unimportant, but many of these applications that come before you are somewhat routine, especially the caretaker provision type ones. We don't do a lot of them, but the farm labor ones, watchmen, things like that, where if the requirements are met, the Board doesn't have a ton of discretion on whether they're going to choose to approve it or not. It's really just a determination of whether those requirements are met. Vast majority of those times, all of the investigation is already done by the Planning Department at that time, and so, you know, absent public feedback, those hearings are sort of open and shut. Especially as it relates to the caretaker or medical provisions. It's actually something I would very much prefer to be done, not in public. It is, it's allowed, but it isn't for the best to have people coming here to explain their particular medical problems on why they need care in an open meeting. And so, that is some of the reasons that we want to have it. In addition, it expites the process, although it's not too long. It can be up to 30 days to get in front of the Planning Commission instead of the Director, who is always there. Some of the other things that were changed in this is to add some more definite requirements, especially about the home construction permit and how the renewal process goes. In specific, I know we've consistently had a problem where all the renewals right now are set to be one year and one year only, and it is not always for the best that that is the outcome. So this would be something else we'd be fixing at the same time. Alright, next slide if you would. Alright, notable changes. Obviously, no public hearing, direct review, appeal goes to the Planning Commission, and like all Planning Commission decisions, can be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. Renewals are by the Director typically for a year. We do have a fee associated with that, but the fee would only be applied in cases where the renewal was for a full year. That way, we don't have issues where, say, the Director wants to renew it for three months, and now they need to pay a fee as if it was the whole year. In addition to those, some of the major changes are the home construction piece. Now requires a site plan, which doesn't, I think, have to be too incredible, but basically, it just has to outline where the home is going to go and where the temporary vehicle is going to be, temporary home will be. And then either drawings or a building permit is also required. So that could be architect, could be just construction drawings, could be something they pulled off the Internet, as happens, but something that says this is what is planning to be built. And then either a contractor agreement to actually do the work or a statement that they're going to work, do the work themselves and provide some timeline on what that construction process would look like. I think those are all things that we probably should have had for a great many years, but were never previously required. The last change is it can be renewed no more than three years. Now, we have an option to just have it, right now it's written as if it just cuts there, and there isn't an opportunity to extend it. We could bring that in front of the Planning Commission if that was something you'd rather have done in that way. The nice thing about having it just stop is it doesn't become a discretionary function where you say, okay, well, in your particular case, you're going to get more time just because, and then we have people potentially being treated differently. It's just three years is the time. Now, they could apply again, but then they'd be denied. It's just, it wouldn't be under the same permit. Lastly, for renewals, it's just very poorly worded right now on how that works. And so, the intention would just be, you have your permit, it lasts for a year. When it expires, it expires. We do allow people to renew up to 30 days late for an additional fee, is already in the code. But after that period, it just, we would have that it just terminates. And at that time, they could apply again, but it wouldn't be that same permit. One, it makes the fee a little bit different, but it also shows that you have to come in and actually fill out all the paperwork and explain why you still need this instead of just filling out the form like we usually get now, which says, "I still need it," and that's it. Any questions on the TUP?
Yep. Joe, so number three, which is the home construction, no longer than three years. Is there anything that you've added to it for, let's say hardship? Let's assume that they get six months in and somebody, something happens and they're unable to continue on with construction. What's the plan then? Are you planning on sending it to the Board? Are we going to back, go back through the Director? I mean, there's going to be some hardship stuff, and hopefully it's not abused, but...
I mean, I hate to say it, but I don't think that that fits anymore. I don't think that there should be an exception for a hardship, because in that case, you're not really doing home construction anymore, and now it's just a question of, should you be allowed to live in an RV permanently because of hardship, you know, either financial or medical or whatever? And we could do that. It's not currently under the code that way. But frankly, at that time, you're basically creating a new section that says, anyone with a disability should be allowed to have a full-time, permanent home that's in a recreational vehicle. Does that make sense?
I guess, I mean, it does somewhat make sense. My, I guess, yeah, I, without getting too deep into this and extending this out, but I do think there are times when there's going to be some hardship that happens. They're in the middle of this thing and get going, and let's say they have an accident, fall down, cannot continue on with construction due to what physical problem they have or whatever. At that point, follow what I'm saying, I mean, we could, I can see how it can be abused, and it really does put a lot of load on the Board.
Joe, at the end of three years, if it goes before like Randy and no construction has happened, and he says, okay, we're done with it, deny it, could they appeal to the Board at that point? And then you guys can make a decision on that?
Presently, not for the three years.
Okay.
So, right, so at the three years right now, you wouldn't be allowed to. It would be, if you had a hardship within the three years, right? So say, home construction's supposed to take a year, year and a half. You are six months into the project, you have a hardship, and you don't get anything done for a year. Randy could still extend that. That's not the problem.
Okay, so...
Now, you're into two years, two and a half years. Randy could still extend it up to the three years. But at the three years, if there's still a hardship, but there's no home construction, he wouldn't be able to extend it at that time.
So Randy would not be able to extend it, then it would come before the Board? Or it would just terminate?
Now, it would just terminate. They could then, they could ask again and be denied, and then appeal to this Board.
Okay. Well, if they, if they have the ability to apply again, then they have an option.
Right. They do still have the option. It's just, it wouldn't come to you as a renewal. It would come to you as an appeal from a denial.
Right, I got you.
Which, I know it doesn't seem like it matters, but it's sometimes, it's one of those things where the standard can be different between someone who has a permit and is being rejected from extending a permit versus someone who, in this case, wouldn't have anything and is coming before you knew.
Well, I think, in my three years here, yes, whatever it is, but we haven't had one. Like, if we'd had the three years, we'd have terminated most of them, because there wasn't one actual, like, true hard, like what you're trying to describe, true hardship. No, we haven't had one of those.
I would have to say, why, I would have to agree with that.
You know, so, and previously, we had no teeth to not renew them. As we've set a precedence of renewing them, this kicks that out and allows, puts some teeth into it to hold them to the fire. And if, you know, if there happens to be a one-off, I think, then at that point, they could reapply and do that. I mean, I'm all for that, because right now, we have no way to terminate that.
So I, again, I would have to agree with that. I agree with that right there. And I think there needs to be a point, an endpoint. And I guess you've really answered the question in that if they get to the three years, they're terminated, it's done. For them to continue on, they would have to be back before Randy and then probably back before this Board. So if you're in a hardship situation, I suppose. I guess what I'm looking at here is if you have a contractor, it won't take three years. But if you have some of these people that are out there building their own homes, three years could be, yeah, three years could be the dirt leveling, right? So that's, yeah, I get where we're at. I mean, so, yeah, it is, yeah.
Just keep in mind, TUPs are usually not issued for someone who has a contractor. I don't even know if I ever remember a TUP being issued to someone who had a contractor on board.
Yeah, that's exactly right. I was about to say that when Jeff was talking, and there's almost nobody with professional drawings, there's almost nobody with a contractor online. There's, I mean, what we normally get for a plan is a little hand-drawn box, maybe with some rooms, if they do even that. And so, I mean, we can say this, but the reality is, as long as you offer them the ability to say, well, I'm going to build it myself, and I'm just going to get something off the Internet, that's, that's the default. That's what will almost always come.
But I can, I can counter you just one there. My parents did it. They got a TUP and had a contractor. So there are, there are a few out there, but not, not many. You're right.
Yeah, it's a small percentage.
I guess the question in this case comes to, what is the purpose behind why we allowed this TUP to exist? And it's allowed to exist so the people who are actually building a home can live there temporarily while that home is built. And I think at this time, there is frankly, a number of folks who have this, who have either no or limited intention of actually ever building that home. And it gets to a point where it really has become a way to avoid the requirement, which is that you should be at an RV park if you aren't actually living. And so, this is supposed to be a temporary arrangement, and we're, I'm trying to build something that just says, look, three years is already fairly long for temporary. It could be different. Obviously, if the Commission felt that three years was too short to meet it, it could be five or whatever, but there does need to be some endpoint where not only the public, but also the applicant knows this is the time in which you will have to complete this project. And it can't be, well, this year I'm going to do the foundation. Next year, I'm going to get the financing. And, and all of a sudden, we're at year six or seven, which I know we have several of, the Board has the ability right now to terminate those, but it is a different, I believe, viewpoint between this is when this was meant to end, and now you're coming before us to basically ask for an exception versus there really is no end date, and we're not, I think, comfortable saying we're cutting you off. So I, this is obviously just draft language. If you have additional thoughts, I'm happy to see them. I obviously will take input from everyone else as well. I agree, we don't want to make the drawings and building stuff too difficult to obtain from people who are actually legitimately performing this function.
So just some background on how we got some of these problem children. Before, we had a code enforcement officer, the Director was the, did that work. And part of the difficulties with these projects is, and frankly, is probably most of these, are from enforcement actions where someone was living in an RV. They weren't really planning on building a house. They, they probably owned the property and just thought, hey, I'm just going to live in my RV on my property. And then they got caught. And so, the Director would, you know, try to get them to come into compliance somehow, either move off or what was more likely, this option was, well, okay, if I have to do this TUP to find a way to stay here, I'll, I'll pretend that I'm going to build a house. And so, we get a lot of those code enforcement actions under these scenarios that Joe's been trying to, you know, suggest a solution for. And they would drag them out and drag them out and drag them out. And you've seen plenty of those, I'm sure. So, you know, some of them do plan to build, they just go really slow, but some of them really never really planned to build. They're just kind of going through the motions so they can keep living in their RV.
It has become an issue, starting to become an issue of what you're, the no intentions thing. When we maybe change these things, are we going to look at the application that they fill out and maybe dial that in just a little bit more to more detailed information, more specific information, to where we got something that we can pass around to say like, hey, this is how it is?
That's exactly what we've been trying to do. We have new forms kind of ready to be used. I've been kind of doing them in my spare time, but they're mostly done. And so, I don't know if you know, but we're going, getting a digital permit tracking platform. And so, we'll put these new forms on the new tracking platform that will be coming online in a month, well, probably a couple of months. But anyway, the form for this TUP asks very specific questions relating to this, these problem subjects that keep coming up during these re-reviews every year.
And was there any discussion had for raising the fee to apply? Or does the county feel that that's adequate at this time?
So, one of the changes in here is that, actually, I think that's the landscape fee I changed. But anyway, the, I don't think it's been discussed. We have had an update recently about how we are handling our fees to get those reviewed on a more consistent basis. And so, if this is something that's found to be either too cheap or being abused because it's too cheap, it could be raised, but that'd be in front of the County Commission.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on the temporary use permits?
I guess I'd like to add something. When we get into those requirements, like the site plan, you said, the house and the temporary dwelling, I guess, the RV or whatever. When we get into those, and that's kind of what we'd like to do internally, is get more information on there, right? Especially the bigger lots, it's kind of hard. I mean, setbacks, easements, stuff like that, that I think we need to have in there. Granted, it doesn't necessarily have to be drawn by an engineer to scale or anything, but there has to be some note, something known in there, septic system, the well, right? Locations of that stuff. And I think that that's kind of just internal talking and going between the building and the planning. I think there's different kind of requirements, and as we're going to be going as one group, building, planning, public works, that more, we want to get that all consistent and maybe have some more detail in those.
Right. And essentially, this is to move towards that direction, which is to, I guess, give you some backing when your form says that they will provide this, and then they don't. It's great to be able to just say, you didn't fill it out, it's incomplete. This is required under the code, instead of saying it's incomplete because we want this information, even though it's not specifically required under the code.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this matter? None heard. Are you guys ready to move on to the next one? Okay. Agenda item five, letter B, discussion of potential amendments to the Churchill County Code regarding storage container limits. Mr. Sanford?
All right. I actually put "storage containers" at the end, but this part goes in here. This is actually perfect. This is part of the same idea. Okay, so we've discussed a number of times about issues in our general site requirements, which storage containers is one of, that right now, we have, I guess, one broad brush, which is that anything that we apply in our site development requirements applies throughout the county to every parcel in the county. And so, in discussion with, with planning, I think we decided that we should have at least some level of, I guess, development areas or development regions or something of that nature that would allow us to define areas in the county where different site development standards could apply. So for example, these are the five that I was generally leaning towards. Urban area, a rural area, the gateway corridor, the, an industrial center area, and renewable energy. Now, industrial center and renewable energy is currently just kind of a placeholder because we're, we're working on it and don't have a lot of details for it yet. But the urban, rural, and gateway corridor have been discussed, I think, several times. Could you go to the next one? So this is sort of a zoomed-in image from our master plan on the areas in the county. The area shaded in yellow is what we define as our urbanizing area. The green is essentially our, let me see if it's, I can't remember what it's actually called. Agriculture with residential. The blue is the NASF Fallon buffer. And there's a little red kind of polka dot area, and that is the Hazen and Swingle Bench planning area, which I assume is designed more for our construction along US 50 there. So the general discussion was to base the areas off of this, where each parcel would have a designation either as rural, urban, gateway corridor, et cetera. And then we could create development standards that would align with those needs. So for example, on the storage containers, we might have, let me go back a second. This isn't related to the actual zoning function. So the development, the use table and all of the requirements, whether it's C1, C2, industrial, those would remain the same. Parcels wouldn't be being rezoned or anything like that. Instead, it would go to what the actual use of the property would look like in those situations. So for example, if we had someone who was on an industrial lot inside the urbanizing area or the urban area, we might have storage container limits of, pull up here, will I? I made a table for this. Okay. So in the urban area, an industrial limitation may be, say, six storage containers per acre. Whereas in the rural region, it may be eight per acre. And in the gateway corridor, it could be six or four or something along those lines. That's the, that's the intended function here. And so, when we talk about storage container limits and things of that nature, the idea would be, we would want to think of each of those areas and say, what is the appropriate limit for this area? So if you're on the gateway corridor, we could have more restrictions on how people would use, say, storage containers as compared to somebody who is in the industrial center, out in the urban or the rural area, like the transloading facility would have been. And if you'd actually go, I think it's towards the end of the, yeah. Landscaping, storage containers. Okay. So here was the major questions we had for each development region. One, the maximum number of containers that you wanted to have, whether that's done on a per-acre basis or just a flat number. In particular, we had some questions on whether we wanted to create categorical exclusions for certain types of businesses. So that would be, I think, storage container-based businesses, transloading operation, storage container manufacturing business, things like that. We could put those there. Otherwise, they would be generally applicable. Something to consider that isn't in our code now, especially as it relates to some of these uses, is dealing with extremely large parcels and the aggregating of storage containers in a single location. So this can happen, say, if we have a 10-acre parcel, it makes a lot of sense to say, okay, we're going to do three acres, you know, three, three storage containers per acre or whatever we're going to allow. They put them in one small area on the back, and you have 20, 30 storage containers that are back there. But if we have a 640-acre parcel, and we allow, say, eight in this industrial area, well, that becomes 4,000 containers. And because right now, we don't have any way that we're saying those have to be spread out, that could be 4,000 containers in one or two acres or three acres or however densely they can stack them. So my suggestion in that is to consider whether we want to put limits on either the full parcel, so say, four per acre up to 20. And that, you know, basically says, hey, if you're going to be over this number, you're capped. That's similar. That's similar to what's being done right now with agricultural or ATAN type zoning where it's just up to two. The other idea is to say that they have to be spread out a certain amount of space. And that way we're preventing essentially the aggregation in one single area. And that's if, that's if it's desired, but I believe those would be considerations that we're going to want to take into, into mind.
And I think that was a good way to put it there, Joe is, I think if we just put a cap, that they could come and apply for variance, right? On that, at that time, right? But if we go ahead and cap it, so we limit it on the, because I like that on the table that you've put together here. And so we have it like that and we put a cap. So that's the problem with industrial zone stuff on the corridor there, back to the map. I mean, those are all section, you know, most of them are section, probably 640 acres. So, I mean, somebody come in there and if we cap that, so we don't have to worry about checking out on spreading them out and doing all of that. Where if we just put the cap and if they want a variance, then they can come and ask for one.
I tend to agree. So I think it's just picking a number that we're all comfortable with. I haven't had a lot of discussion about what that number would be yet. But when we came with a more final presentation, uh, we do that. If you have ideas on numbers now, I'd be happy to hear them. So we can kind of bring them that way. But in general, I think we're looking at, um, creating a more categorical exclusion for those large rail specific facility or storage container specific facilities where, you know, a cap may not make sense. But otherwise having a relatively limited cap. And, and we don't have any of these right now that I think are a major problem. But on a 640 acre parcel, basically at this point in time, you might as well not have a limit because 4,000 is a lot of containers.
Well, we did do, the last meeting, we did kind of go off and adjust those numbers. But again, I'm, just like we're talking about right here, that's an industry. That that we approved out there is, is a industry that's going to be moving in those containers around, loading them off and on them. So now we're talking about a business that's in the container business. I think that's where we've got to have some open minds and start thinking about that. We kind of did the same thing with the out west as well. But again, it's a business that's in the container business.
So let me just ask a question on that. Um, if we set a number, right? 500, that's the number. And it's a business like that, then they're approved up to 500. If they want to come back and get more, then they can come back for a variance. And that would be going in front of you guys for that, right?
Well, I think, uh, you, you have to keep in mind whether you're talking about those specialty businesses, the container businesses. I mean, in the case of the transloading operation, you just kind of waive the number, um, in that case. So if it's appropriate, then maybe, uh, that's one of those categorical exclusions that Joe is talking about. And so, you know, not only need you, you need to think about the number, but how many stacking, how many high? And so, you know, it's, it's both things, not just one. And if you think there's some businesses that need a categorical exclusion, you need to think about whether they should just get more allowance, whatever stacking or numbers, or if they should not have a limit. So you need to think about it in that term too.
So for example, with the, with the one that was out there at the Hazen location, yeah, there are times when they could have quite a number of containers there. But there are times when those containers are moving off and on, off and on, off and on. And, you know, I, it, that's a completely different, that needs to be looked at differently than the person that's going to put 4,000 containers on a six, uh, you know, 640 acre in a, in a 10 acre area. So I, again, I think it's great that we got the numbers, but then let's also take a look at these companies that are coming in, that that's going to be something that is going to generate revenue for the county. That's a business. Now we need to, now we need to be able, and I do think that along the corridor, you know, that's where we need to really start bringing those numbers down because that's, as Marcus said, you know, the corridors what's invites the people into the community, so.
So I'm going to follow up on that. Um, gosh dang it, I lost my train of thought. So the way Joe's kind of setting this up, it's, at this point, it's, it would be easy to add those, right? If something comes along, we can, we find something, right? A business that, that maybe potentially wants to come along, can we add that to that classification or what?
I mean, if it's a niche business that we're looking at one, one time, I would be considering that probably best for variance. But if it's something that we see and say, look, this is something that we're going to start getting to see several of these as they come in, then yes, we would be able to just add that designation of businesses to, to our categorical exclusion if they weren't already. And then we would be able to say, okay, look, if you're looking at starting this type of business, you would know at least the container limit piece wouldn't be your holdup. You may still have to do an SUP and the things like that. But, um, you wouldn't also be looking at a variance on your container limit. You'd be look, talking more about, well, how am I going to screen them or how am I going to, uh, how high can I stack them, those kinds of questions.
So when you're, um, talking about these types of businesses that you might want to consider for categorical exclusion, uh, the thing about doing uses in a code that includes the use table, if you've looked at it, is if you try to name every single instance that you can think of, you will inevitably be wrong. So you always try to think about it in terms of categories. And so in this categorical exclusion, I would suggest describing it in terms of its characteristics rather than trying to name each one. So, um, I think in the, in the two staff reports on this subject that you've seen in the last couple of months, I've talked about them as businesses that inherently handle, uh, large numbers of containers. And then you can put some such as, some examples, but you know, you're not tied to just those examples. And what that leaves you is that it's up to the administrator to say, this, such and such thing that somebody is proposing falls in that category or it doesn't.
Okay. And so you have, I think, a couple of the tables in front of you. The general idea is that we would have a table. We'd say, okay, look, in the more dense residential regions, so I guess I have this on, it's page four of the development standards piece. It's in a Word document, kind of looks like that. That's it. Perfect. Okay. Like, like I said, these are definitely open to, to amendment. The R1, R2 and R3, I think I have zero in there. Not sure that these are appropriate at all in those sections. The E1, A5, A10, uh, has the remaining, the, it's currently one per acre with a maximum of two. I have some debate on the RR20. I'm not sure if there even RR20 zones inside the urban, urbanizing area. But if there were, that's what they are currently set at. And then C1, C2 and industrial rise, I think relatively quickly. I didn't put proposed maximums. I believe we should put maximums in there. The, my personal inclination would be to put those maximums relatively low just because of the size of parcel issue. And then if that becomes a burden, it's easier to request a variance, I think, than to necessarily.
So on this, Joe, the people that already have existing content, like the properties and different things, like especially in the E1, A5, that, right? And if they've got three or four containers, so then will code enforcement then come at them or?
This, this would be, as it currently is written, is the maximum two. I don't know that we, I mean, it's a code enforcement issue now.
Yeah. I mean, but is that how we will handle it kind of going forward if we go through with this?
Yes.
I guess was my question on that.
Yes. This would become a code enforcement issue.
You know, anybody that had one in an R1 or R2 would have to get rid of their container.
This would probably be a pre-existing non-conforming use, so they may be able to, to keep it in this situation.
What Joe's describing as a change in the code applies at the date that the code was changed. So people who came before that, they already have one or two containers, they can still keep them.
So then that gives me to my next thing, then similar like we do other code infractions or like when businesses change hands, when the property sells, are we going to come after them then?
You mean making them change it when the property sells?
Yeah. I mean, similar to the businesses and landscaping and all the stuff that we've done so far. And just because that business, we weren't enforcing it on previous businesses. But soon as somebody else come in there, then we said, hey, we're going to have this.
We generally allow folks, if they're keeping the business exactly as it is, the grandfathering continues with them. It's if they change the use or expand the use, then they have to come into compliance with the current code. So in the residential context, it probably wouldn't have a change in use or an expansion in the use. And so it would still be allowed, even if they sold the property. But if somebody got rid of the storage container and then, and then somebody said, oh, well, I know there used to be a storage container here X many years ago, then we wouldn't allow that.
And, and we have no way to know when a property sells. So there'd be no way to kind of police that.
So I guess my question is, what's the definition of a storage container? So if it has wheels, it's no longer a storage container, correct? Now it's a semi trailer?
It's called a, um.
Or other similar enclosures.
Or other similar enclosures.
Called a cargo box.
You follow what I'm saying here is, is I, we, when we talk about a storage container, that has no fixed axle under it, correct? And now we, and I'm starting to see more and more and more of these actual semi trailers that have a fixed axle, it's not a container. And they're starting to stack those up on, in a lot of spots.
It's all grouped up together. Uh, it's not just a sea land container or a cargo box. It's, it's a generic word that's used that includes, um, I guess, 18 wheeler cargo containers that are towed around normally.
In the proposed language, you'll see shipping containers or other similar enclosures.
I mean, I, that's, I, that's all I'm saying is, is that you've got.
And so that's what we're trying to capture here. Part of the difficulty is we don't want to also include like sheds. And so, um, not from the, uh, obviously a stacking limit point of view, but say someone in the R1, R2 and R3 area may want a shed. That doesn't qualify as, say, a detached garage or a, you know, a, something that would require a building permit as an actual garage or something like that, but as a small shed. We may want to allow that without allowing shipping containers or their essentially cousins.
Devil's advocate, Dean, what about shipping containers that have been engineered into residences?
And that's another issue is that people are wanting to use shipping containers to do other things. And you'll look in Architectural Digest and you can find really nice houses built of shipping containers. We're never going to see that here. Those things cost a million dollars. Uh, they, they cost more than a house because, I mean, a normal house of equal size because of all the engineering and alterations that you have to do. But people do want to do a house in a shipping container and it kind of looks just like a shipping container. So, um, you know, if you engineer it to a construction standard acceptable to the building department, well, okay, I guess it can be a house, in which case it stops being a shipping container under the code. So really rare instance, but yeah, that can happen. Oh, and by the way, sheds are not regulated like a shipping container. You can have kind of a, as many sheds as you want. And I think the idea is that they sort of look like a house or have that kind of architectural style. So there's less objection to them.
So I guess questions for you today would be things like, based off of the types of zonings we've been talking about, um, how do we feel about screening on the shipping containers in the particular areas? So do we want to require screening in all of the areas? Are there any exclusions that you're considering on not requiring screening in a certain area?
And I'm going to add to that too. Um, when we get to the stacking and the height, that's, oh, I'm sorry. I just, you know, when, if you put up a, a six foot fence, is it going to cover one shipping container? And if it's in an area that, you know, we want to have them screened, then that's really not feasible. Um, and if we say that they can stack them too high, well, now that's 20 feet plus or minus. You know, by the time you get into screening that, I mean, it's, could be a pretty extensive.
So again, I, I think we're coming back to, if you're in industrial area out west of Fallon, on that edge out there, again, just as we discussed, some of the, what they consider screening has been landscaping, trees, so on and so forth. I don't even know if you can get a sagebrush to grow out or a greasewood to grow out in Hazen, some of those areas out there. I, I feel like if you're going to do, if you're going to require any kind of screening in some of those areas, maybe in the C2 areas, where now we're talking about, is we coming down the corridor? Kind of like what we were talking about. If you're out in the industrial areas, I, you could put, you could, them trying to screen something and they're in the container business where they're three high like we did out there, that's going to be pretty difficult to do with anything other than a berm like we asked them to do with some fence on top. And, and I mean, really I'm out there, I was just thinking about that the other day. Those containers and that yard, that yard already is cleaner and more put together than that RV storage thing across the street on the other side. That, that's an eyesore as far as I'm concerned. That's one of the biggest eyesores. I don't know if that's lies in Lyon County, but if it's in Churchill, that's, and this container business is a whole different, is a whole different deal.
And I guess my thought on that, right? If it's an industrial area, you almost expect to see industrial things, shipping containers, equipment, stuff like that. Um, again, we have this as an industrial area within the corridor coming into town, right? Which now it's like, we have to decide whether do we want that screened? Do we, do we don't care because it's showing that we're supporting industrial, right? I mean, maybe, maybe if we screened it, nobody'd see it. Maybe you don't, you know, I don't know. It's just, that's kind of a thought, right? If it's industrial, do you really necessarily have it screened?
All my time at the board, the, one of our biggest problems is applicants, you know, they always disagree with the screening. And the lay of the land versus the lay of the, where the road is, lots of times the screening is useless because you can still see, you can see them, you know, even fence, privacy fences, you can see in people's backyard. You know, so it's a moot point there with some people. We understand the code was put there to, to make everything look nice. So it does, it's to a certain level. Though I think we need to, we're going to have, on the screening, we're going to have to start working with people to, a little bit better, I guess, to, is it really needed for that specific area or whatever?
And so I'll just, I'll kind of go with what the current language says. So you'll see the proposal in URB. so you'll see the proposal in URB, that'd be urban, the urban area, um, there'd be no stacking in anything except the C2 and industrial district, uh, in those, they could be stacked up to two-high, if they do choose to have a storage container, it has to be, you know, screened by a fence, at least eight feet in height, um, if they stack them, it'd be screened at 16-foot high, and so this would be the urban area. Um, if you go down for me?
I guess I got a quick question on that, on the urban area, and that yellow, right, on the map?
Yes.
That, that covers a big area, just saying, you know what I mean? We're not just saying just the corridor of Highway 50 coming into town, we're saying all the way out to Soto Lake and around, to Love Lock Highway, to all of that, and asking like it to screen, and so...
All right, so I'll start, I'll just say that, so, I, I just have the map as sort of a, an idea, I don't know that anyone is married to those particular designations, it's just the idea is, these are areas we could potentially be thinking about, um, again, in particular, I would say, if you, um, that could be a, that could be a substantially narrowed area if we, if we're considering urbanizing being different than, say, necessarily considering it for development so much as the requirements for development, um, but that's, I think, gonna be a more holistic approach, it wouldn't work, it wouldn't be storage container only specific, it would be, what's the general level of development we, uh, and I guess, site standard we want to have in this whole area, um, and to prevent having too many zones, you know, they do have to be somewhat broad, but, again, I'm not married to anything, I was just kind of given an idea of what this could look like.
Well, I can tell you personally, I think I'd be against most of the screening at all, at that point, to, to be perfectly honest, 'cause, first of all, it'd be an enforcement nightmare, personally, I mean, we're gonna go down, out by Soto Lake, and, I mean, we're gonna have the same screening as we do on the corridor, you know, if we splash it like that, so I would be 100% against any screening at that point, I mean, I get it if we were gonna talk about just the corridor coming into town like that, which, I don't know, to me, I mean, I've got mixed emotions, part of it's off-putting when I see a lot of screening, you know, as I drive around through California and stuff, where there are some places where they've screened in like that, through those areas coming into town, and it just looks, um, some of it looks okay, some of it doesn't, right? I mean, some of it looks like, what are you getting into, you know, as you're driving into town, you know, 'cause everything's screened in, you don't even know what's going on behind that screen, so, I mean, I kind of got mixed emotions, and I don't know, but I would be against screening, I mean, outside of that corridor coming in, I think I'd be against all screening, just because, en- enforcing it would be a nightmare, then going to people and telling them, hey, you gotta put an eight-foot fence here in your, you know, behind your house to hide the storage unit, that's me personally.
And I would go back to what Randy was talking about, I mean, what is your, what's your interpretation of, of a good-looking corridor? If you have industry going, and you're coming in and you see these businesses going, to me, that says right off the bat, here's a community that's willing to bring some industry in, and, and, or, as long as you keep it, you know, somewhat under control, it, it, it gives a perception that you have a booming, you know, that you, that you have a viable community, uh, so I'm with Zach on a lot of that, I think outside, in that corridor area, yeah, now we're gonna be talking about some things, but outside of that, sometimes it's gonna be pretty difficult, it seems to me.
Screening is not our favorite issue, because you're telling people what to do with their property, and they may not care, and they, and then, when they drive down the road and you can see over the fence, it's like, why did you make me do this? And then we have to answer that question.
And I think a lot of it has to do is, is, right, is, is, if it's in the code, and somebody comes in, then we have to say that, right? Whether we, whether you guys, whether we want it, don't want it, I, it doesn't matter, because it's written, we have to say that, we have to say that about landscape, we have to say that about everything, because it's in the code, and I think that's...
Right, and so that's, I mean, that's one of the major topics, I think, we have here, which is, what are we thinking about in terms of storage and screening? Where do we really want it to apply? Where do we not really care? And is there something that is gonna make, I think, the commission feel like, look, this is the area that we truly believe needs it, so that when, because it is written, and then someone comes in and they are in that area, and we say, you must do it, it's gonna be because we actually want you to do it, instead of, we all know this is kind of a waste, and that you probably shouldn't have to do it, but we're gonna tell you, you have to do it, and then they maybe don't do it, and we come up for a review, and it's like, well, they haven't obviously done it, because they know it's a waste of money, and we're all sitting here arguing about it, when realistically, 10 out of the 10 people in the room don't really want it, but the code wants it, so, I have, that is, in general, the whole, I think, idea here between having, for example, in this case, the urban could have the, the screening entirely removed, I think the rural already has it removed, but the gateway corridor may leave it.
Yeah, so, that's what I was gonna say there, or even, not even the gateway, too, but can you just make it a condition, a condition that we can add, based on the, yeah, business location and that, or is that pinpointing somebody's particular business too hard?
We, I don't think we would wanna try and do something where we say, we're gonna decide based on your business whether or not we're gonna make you screen in.
Okay, well, I was just thinking, I mean...
I mean, storage containers is one we could either categorically just not require screening at all.
Oh, I was just kind of thinking, 'cause I'd heard that, like, they talked about, like, screening, like, Benham Diesel, right? And so that's in the county, but then if we go across town here, and we get to Lester's Automotive that's in the city, and he doesn't have any screening, you know, so here, I mean, we're kind of, we're slapping a guy's hands, 'cause he's in the county, and this guy can get away with whatever he wants, 'cause he's in the city, you know what I mean? It's counterintuitive, and...
Yeah, and I'd like to add something to that, to the code, right, and, and getting more definition in the code, right? For myself, I think if I'm gonna go purchase some land and do a business, I'm gonna do some research, and I don't think you can really get enough information, I think if we can clarify it more, then I could say, I don't wanna buy that piece of par, property, because I have to do this, this, and this, and I don't wanna do that, and that, when I could buy one somewhere else, right? Now, we do have quite a few people, they just come in and do whatever, they, you know, they just, they, they have no research, they're just, they just buy, buy something, start work, start using it, and then come in and get, ask for forgiveness, I guess, which, you know what I mean, so, but again, I would rather have it more clarity, clear, um, just for that purpose, I guess, and then especially for us in the house, right, because now it's written down, it's, it's easier for us to...
There would be a fine line there that would have to be maneuvered really well, because you put too much in there, now that's gonna hinder the growth of our county, and our county needs to grow, um, so we, making it dial in and in really hard is tough for me, because, you know, if I show up and have a great idea, and I see a couple things that's gonna cost me 100 grand, I'm probably gonna turn around and go somewhere else.
I think the idea is, we just don't want you to be surprised it's gonna cost 100 grand, and so the idea would be, okay, maybe at that time, you wanna come in and ask for a variance or something...
I, I would agree with that.
As a condition of purchasing, instead of, you've already bought it, you got started, and now, you know, you come into the planning because someone called you in for enforcement.
Similar to the RV park out there, right? He buys that, you know, he thinks he's redoing it, he does it to the setbacks he assumed, right, based on how they were, and then, well, when it changed ownership, now it doesn't meet code to the new code, 'cause that was under the previous code, and things like that, and then, now he's gonna enlarge those spots, or technically, unless we granted him approval, but, I mean, those kind of items that need to be somewhat spelled out, I, I mean, as best as you can without being like, you know, this and that.
Okay, um, I think I have a pretty good sense of where you folks are at on this one, other than, than stacking height, um, in general, I thought three in the rural area, and two in the, everywhere else for C2 and industrial, um, but if you have, feel something different, let me know.
All right, uh, is there any public, excuse me, go ahead, no, is there any other public comment? Hang on a second, does he need a microphone?
Take him to hockey puck.
Uh, Bob Gettle, for the record, a, a couple of things that I worry about, these shipping containers, that now's the time for staff to look into, and, you know, I, I'm not a fan of shipping containers, but they're coming, and so we might as well try and control it the best that we can, uh, shipping containers, though, have been migrating into more of central Nevada over the last decade, and there's other communities that've already had to deal with this, so, it'd be great if staff could first off, reach out to other communities that are high-desert communities, um, 30,000 people populations, whether it be Arizona, northern Arizona, and see what they're doing, 'cause I don't wanna put the burden for us to try to invent the wheel, 'cause I think it's already been invented, and we can take some of that, some of the questions I have is, when these shipping containers come, is there gonna be installation requirements, or you just dump them out on a piece of ground? Are, are they gonna try and be level and straight, or not? Are they gonna have setback requirements on a shipping container? You know, when, when you have a shed or garage, you can't put it up on the property line, yet I can take you to some shipping containers where they're pushed right onto the property line, and so I think they're a structure, I think they need to follow the same setbacks. The other thing that kind of bothers me is when residents will take two or more shipping containers and put them parallel with each other, with 20 feet in between the two, and that's great for year one, and then year two, they find a, a set of trusses on eBay, and now they've put kind of a half-ass roof on the two, and so now, is it shipping containers, or is it now a, a, a structure that needs to be under the jurisdiction of the county? So, now's the time to do this, and I'm glad it's gonna happen, but if we can take maybe a bigger bite and explore some of those areas, um, other than that, that, yeah, so, but the time is to, to work on that.
Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number 5C, Review and Discussion of Potential Amendments to the Church County Code Regarding Landscaping Requirements. Mr. Sanford.
All right, could you go, uh, there we go, landscaping. Um, okay, so, the major questions that we have in this, you know, based off of what we've been talking about, about the development regions, is, um, what are our base requirements in each of those regions, in particular, the differences between new construction and change or expanded use? So like we discussed, people who don't change or expand the use, they're grandfathered in, so someone buys, um, the bowling alley, and I'm not sure whether that's in the city or not, but anyway, um, suppose it was in the county, if they continue to operate it as it is, they wouldn't become subject to any of these changes in the code, but if they say, you know, business is great, we wanna add 18 more lanes, and so we're gonna build an expansion over on this other area of the property, or adjoining property, well now, that use would become under the code, and they'd have to meet the remaining standards. And so, sometimes the ability and what we want can be different between someone who's starting fresh, starting with either a vacant lot, or an unimproved lot, versus somebody who's either already got a business, and they're operating, and they wanna expand their use, and then they realize, well, expanding my use comes with these hidden extra costs that aren't just building my lanes, it's, I've also now have to put in landscape, and I, oh, and now I gotta put screening, and now I've gotta do these other things that I hadn't planned for before, and so, especially as it relates to landscaping, we may wanna have separate requirements between what you would have if you started new, and what you'd have under an expanded use, so, um, I kind of had put together a, a general plan, um, and proposal, and that's in your, in your packet there, but essentially, the idea that I would have would be something along the lines of, you know, new construction's gonna have a set of standards, and we, I didn't change any of the standards, uh, that are currently there, I'll leave that to these folks, if we wanna add new standards, or we're not happy with the current actual landscaping, but, the idea would be, that would become the base standard, the minimum standards for a property, and when somebody comes in and wants to get, um, to build or expand use, they gotta submit a landscape plan to these guys, and those will be the, the minimum standards generally, but if they wanna do an expansion or a new use, they could submit a landscape plan to the director, and then, in this case, the director would have the authority to say, okay, I can accept landscape between nothing, all the way to whatever those standards for new construction are, so the director can't come in and say, you know, I'd really love to see a forest out there, I'm gonna make you do more than if you were new construction, but he could approve less, and so that's, that's a potential, um, solution here, so that we would say, look, you have to submit a plan, and we have to get approved by the director, but if you've got a parking lot full of asphalt, maybe we aren't gonna make you put one tree every 15 parking spaces in this area, maybe we make you do something else somewhere else, but that would be up to the director at that time, and he could go up to what is required for new construction, but he couldn't ask for more, um, so that's just a, kind of a food for thought, um, there should be, sort of in your packet, a little grid, um, but, the idea is, we would wanna have something under new construction that's either gonna be either a strict requirement, or, um, director discretion, and that could be based off the different areas, right? Maybe out in the rural area, like, say, where NNRC is, maybe we don't need anything out there, right? And so, in that case, uh, maybe a strict requirement, you know, something in the code that says you will do this, maybe it shouldn't apply out in the rural area, maybe that should just be director discretion to start with, and that way, if it doesn't make sense, the landscape could be approved to be less, um, whereas, in the gateway corridor, we'd have the code, and the code has to be met, and that's for new construction, and maybe in the gateway corridor, we don't wanna allow the director to do anything, maybe we want that to also be the code, and so if you're in this area, you will meet the landscape requirements, period, um, and so, that's sort of what this table's designed to, to get some ideas and discussion around, um, that's the one.
So I'd agree with that, Joe, on that, giving it back to the director, rather than having it here, right? On that, and then I think on the, you know, any new build, I mean, they're starting from scratch, so, I mean, and the landscape bill or doing all that, I mean, that's a pretty simple, I mean, not a big deal of the deal, you know, and then having that discretion on doing, and that, you know, the change of use, like on an existing, I mean, similar to Paul's, and, I mean, there's other ones on down the line that have done that, where you have that existing, or it's all blacktop, or whatever, you know, it's, I mean, there's a significant cost, uh...
you know, it's, I mean, there's a significant cost to a business owner or new business owner, because they just purchased it to start something, to go and tear up. I mean, I wouldn't want to go tear up that blacktop and redo it all personally, but, I mean, in his instance, I mean, there might be some leeway when they come through and repave and put it in the sidewalks. But I would agree that we give it to that, and then there's discretion on buying an old building or an old lot and being able to give it to the director to say either we don't need any more, or it'd be nice to see this and this, where we have that leniency.
So I'd like to follow up on the landscape, the new construction versus the existing, right? Typically, new construction's commercial, you're going to get a set of improvement plans, it's going to be landscape, and that's kind of, and I think the code is kind of more pertinent to new construction, if you will, right? If you're one tree for every 10 spaces, it's a six-by-20 island, it's whatever, I mean, you can define that to be what you want. New construction, I think that's easier to handle. It's the existing stuff. If you've got somebody that has, throughout the years, they've paved the entire thing or concreted their entire, everything's concrete, everything's hard surface, and then we come back and say, well, you need four trees, and now you either got to saw cut your asphalt, you got to trench, you got to pour jack, you got to do something to get water to these, or they just cut it, they just cut holes in the ground, put some trees in, and then a year later, they're dead, and it doesn't matter. So that would just defeat the purpose. So that's where I get a little bit of heartburn in between the new and the existing. Now, if there's place for landscape, right, if there's, if it's dirt, they got, they have a handicap space and everything else is dirt, I mean, then I think we could do something, because there's space available, right? I would rather see an asphalt or a concrete or something hard versus dirt, right? Rather see dirt to be landscaped, because again, it keeps the dust down, whatever, but you can't make asphalt or concrete really look bad versus you can put in a bunch of landscape, and then in a year, it could look bad.
That's the biggest thing, too. That's the other thing, like even with some of the new stuff or any of that, where they let it go, or they do that, and they put it in the zero scape with just a little bit, and then they just let it go and let all the weeds come up. I mean, we see that, I mean, the stockmans with their lawn and all that stuff around there, I mean, they've completely let that thing go. I mean, we'd have been better off, you know, just making a sidewalk at this point, so, I mean.
And the purpose with the landscape, too, is to actually make things look good at the frontage of the building. It does no purpose if you put some shrubs or something in the back where nobody ever sees, because that building covers it up. And again, that was just my thoughts.
Yeah, no, so devil's advocate here. So let's just assume you have a, I'm going to take your bowling alley, because that bowling alley is such a beautiful piece of work out there. Let's just assume that somebody next to them comes in, builds a whole new building, is required, meets all the requirements on landscaping, then the bowling alley decides they're going to add 16 more lanes, they're going to take in, and they're going to attach that to the existing structure, okay? Now you have that existing structure now, per building code and per all state codes, now has to be brought up to current codes and standards. And then you have this section that has the new, that's basically new construction, that's going to be required with landscaping. What are you going to do with the portion that was existing? Follow what I'm saying, just devil's advocate. So you've got now two, basically you have one structure that is in two different pieces. You have new construction, and then you have a construction that brought it up to new and current standards. Are you going to have to, are you going to have to go back and have them relanscape? That is, follow, I'm just, like I said, being devil's advocate here, there are some things that can, that can come back to bite you later on if you're not thinking about it ahead of the game on it.
So I think we would consider that an expanded use, and that'd be a director discretion. Whereas if they had built, if they built new lanes on a new parcel, that would be new And so I think related to your question is where, is kind of where this grid is designed to be, where I think the idea is to say, where is it that you want to make something non-discretionary? Where you just want to say, look, if you're in this area and you expand your use, you got to do it, you know, really no matter how much it costs, kind of like when you want to update a building to ADA compliance because you're doing something, I mean, you got to do it. It's a cost, and you got to do it, and it's not, you know, that you can't give it variance or an exception, is if you're doing it, you're doing it. And so, for example, that could be in, say, the gateway corridor, whereas maybe that doesn't make sense in the rural area. And so I just want to leave that as a, if you have, I would appreciate your feedback there, because I'm going to try and draft it to match that, and so.
I think the master plan helps us there a little bit, because it sort of tells you what direction the county wants things to look and see, maybe. So you could reference that item to help you make that decision. And then there, have, did you consider putting something in there if the applicant disagrees with the director, that they can appeal that to the commission, to where we could maybe decide what's going to happen on that specific area?
Right. And that's already in the code, basically. Any, any, any decision the director makes at all can be appealed to the planning commission.
And I think, I guess where I was going, that was, if we're going to change that up a little bit to where it gives him that direction, is it's always a, make it a known thing, you know? They know what the next step would be if they didn't see eye to eye there, but.
Right. I think the part I'm talking about where I say no discretion, not, no offense, Randy, would be if the director wanted less than you want, you wouldn't have an appeal.
Well, I guess where I'm going is, is if, if the applicant doesn't want to do anything, and he says two trees and one bush, then they can appeal, like make, justify why I have to do something.
Right. And so you're going to get, you'll get half the appeal. I guess was what I'm trying to say is, you're going to only get the appeals from someone who's being asked to do more.
Than they want to do.
Than they want to do.
And that's what I'm.
But if you ever have a situation where Randy approves something that's less than this board would have wanted, there obviously will be no appeal. And so when I say discretion, that's basically the discretion that doesn't have an appeal. I mean, I guess there is if the district attorney's office or the board of county commissioners took issue, but otherwise, it generally wouldn't have an appeal.
Any other questions or discussion? Is there any public comment?
Another option that, as Randy's talked about, existing hardscape surfaces where we have to trench and cut. Zach bought up Paul's spot where it's all asphalt already to go, and might not be appropriate there. And I always like to listen to what Jeff has to say, that there are areas in this corridor where nothing's going to grow, no matter what you do anyway. And so that would be a total waste of resources to deal with that. Is there a way to create some kind of formula that say that everybody's going to have to do landscaping, but it's not appropriate in certain areas? Can't there be a formula that, like you should have been putting three trees here and eight bushes? Since we can't do it here, it just goes into a credit, and then the county can use that credit for another county park somewhere when they're in, improving something where the county needs it for a future park. So that way, Paul owes us four trees, and your concrete example owes us 10, and then out there at the, at the, the storage place for the, that would have been 15 trees, so now we've already got 30 trees to be used at the next county park or something like that. So there should be a way to do that.
Where you kind of, you're acting, so they could get credited, kind of like when we did the SUPs or whatever on this stuff, where they want higher density, we said, hey, you got to give us this. And then, so we're going to bank the, Paul, Paul needs to pay for two trees that goes in this park, and then this guy's got to pay for this and that, you know? I mean, that's not a, I would, I would 100% agree with that, you know, for future development.
Parking, either in the city or county, like 15 years ago, if you didn't have enough parking spaces, you got to pay because you don't have them, and then that went for something else. So that's something you guys can work in, I think would be pretty.
I guess my only concern with that is if now we are taking numbers of trees or landscape, and we want to put it into a park, now we've now created a park that we have to maintain, and, you know what I mean? So now it's just going to cost, add further costs to that. It's not just the cost of the trees, now it's maintenance, so it's, it's a continual cost, I guess. So that would have to be something.
Or replace in an existing park.
Replace exist, yeah.
Replace in an existing park, replace in the existing county building, maybe this building doesn't have enough trees for code. Do something, because it's not appropriate to do it in every single case, like the three examples you've already brought up.
Sure. And we actually have the golf course, we've got, you know, with Snipplama funds, we've got some, some projects, we could grant, you know, receive those funds, there's other things that we can be doing, correct? So I like that, it's just, you know, I mean.
I think I like the idea. One of the pieces that maybe it works towards is it creates a cap essentially on what the expenditure would be. Because if we say, look, the alternative is that you pay $3,000 per tree, whatever the, and I'm, you know, whatever the number is that you're avoiding in landscape, then we've created a sort of a backstop where if someone who is looking at the project says, look, this is financially infeasible, because doing this is going to cost $50,000, and we as a community have decided, look, based off of, you know, either parking spaces or whatever we're going to say, square footage area, you know, you shouldn't have to pay more than, say, $12,000 to get this done. And if it's going to cost you 50, you should just pay the 12, and we're going to get to this outcome. And that way, we've, we've created the cap, but if you're under the cap, even if you don't really like it, maybe you ought to just pay the $10,000 to get it landscaped. So I think there's some value there where it takes the judgment somewhat away from, you know, someone coming to Randy and say, I shouldn't have to do anything, to just saying, look, this is, this is an amount that we deem reasonable, and if it's going to be more than that, we understand that it's some, that it's unreasonable, and therefore you can do this alternative. If it's going to be less than that, probably ought to just landscape your front.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure that we're not, we don't have this fee of whatever it is, right? 3,000, 5,000, whatever it is, whatever that comes out to be. And if somebody has, it's all dirt out there, then they don't, that's the one that doesn't get that choice to, to say, well, I just want to pay the 12 grand, I just want to do landscape, because they can do landscape.
I think that's real easy, though, to determine, like on an existing, where we're concreted in or we're blacktopped in, you know, we can make that discretion real quick. The person that has the ability to do it, now you're going to go ahead and do it, you're not going to pay the fee. You know what I mean? I, I think it's as, the places where it does not fit, technically, I think then we could collect that fee and do it that way.
All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number 5, Letter D. A review and discussion of potential amendments to the Churchill County Code regarding outside storage requirements. Mr. Sanford.
Okay, this is a relatively similar idea for the screening. Again, the major, I think, considerations are in new construction versus change in use. You know, in new construction, we might have the ability to say, look, you're preparing this design, you're going to have to screen either debris or some part of what you're doing. Here's a way you could either make that, you could make that work, whereas changes in use may not have a spot for that. Again, there's the basic question of where do you want it at all? So, for example, if we don't want it in the rural region, we don't want it in even maybe, say, the urban region, but we do want it on the gateway corridor, that's the, that's the initial question, where do we want it? And then if you do want it in an area, do you want it for just new construction? Do you want it for changes in use? And how do you want to allow, if there's going to be any discretion?
So this is a little, I mean, Eric's brought it up several times where it's real, I mean, it's tough, right? But we think about like the corridor and that, but then I also think about out by the dump, or any type of deal that depending on what kind of business they put in that industrial, it may need to be screened, depending on the business, I mean, or that type of, we don't want to just say just in the urbanized area, because I believe, I don't know if that would be considered rural, it'd probably be pretty close right there, but.
So these would be special uses, things with a special use permit could still have a requirement.
Doing it that way.
Even if it didn't previously exist, it would only be the, the uses that don't have a special use permit requirement.
Yeah.
That would have no ability for you to impose a restriction that didn't otherwise exist.
Yeah. Because when you look at like storage or dumpster storages, or, you know, I mean, Fernandez, you know, I mean, you kind of want that from any trash debris and stuff like that flying, I mean, we have to have that at that point. You know, we can't just say, I mean, thankfully, that's on the corridor, you know, it's not in the rule spot, but we didn't want it in the rule spot, too. I mean.
Right. And I think in some of those cases, the function is not screening as much as it is something else, right? It's, it's not really to screen the storage at the dumpster, it's to prevent debris from leaving the area. Or I think an example has been brought up of like cars, right? And there's a, there's a basic question of, well, should that be screened? And then there's another question of, should we allow for that for a security requirement, right? I mean, and so those are, those are different takes on between whether something is screened for the function of screening it versus screened because we want you to have screening because your use is special and needs that requirement. You guys have any thoughts on, on where, let's be honest, where do you not want it? Because I will take it out in those areas.
The unnecessary areas.
I mean, I can, I can tell you, I mean, I don't, I know it's kind of a nice word, but how do you do it, right? Like, say at Benham's, how do you screen that in and make it feasible, functional, too? Not just feasible, functional. And then if you've only got that one screen, but then we're saying that the, the trailer sales guy, you know, is okay, and all the junk he's got piled up there, and then we look across to Bob's Root Beer, you know, and that's okay. That's, I don't know if I can, I can't see myself seeing that screening is, would be a mandatory thing in that area, personally. I think we should still have the option to require it, but I don't know if it should be triggered through there.
You're talking even in the corridor?
That is.
Yeah, that's what you're talking about.
That's 100% right on the corridor.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, so I just, just wanted to clarify that, to make sure.
Yeah. I mean, I just.
So, yeah, I, certainly, you got.
So I guess one thing I'll bring up, if you would just scroll up a little bit. There. I know we've talked about the corridor a lot, but it's not, it's not actually defined anywhere. And one of the descriptions has been, well, anything along US 50 from, you know, the county line in counts. And I'm not, you know, we don't have to accept that as the corridor. You know, the corridor could be the types of things that you, for the purposes of this, I think that's too big a corridor, because what we're trying to do is create zones where the public and the commission are, accept that this zone should be treated differently. And so if we want the gateway corridor to be, say, I mean, and I generally just took a map that said, look, it's along US 50, properties are budding it between, say, the intersection with 95, which is almost all city, all the way out to, say, Sheckler. Maybe that's the corridor. And we could expand that in 10 years when maybe building is out there, but the corridor doesn't have to be everything all the way out, because maybe that doesn't make a lot of sense. Because maybe that doesn't make a lot of sense. And so maybe it's Sheckler, maybe it's McLean, maybe it's really just Casey Road and we only care about the 10 parcels. Please don't do that. But, but I, I think this is the, the time to say, we as this commission and obviously the county commission will weigh in too, to say, this is the area where we care that you do this. And hopefully that will also say, look, in these other areas where we're currently getting code enforcement complaints because someone hasn't screened their thing out in the middle of nowhere, we'll be able to say, look, where we care is here and we do want you to enforce that. And so if you have, say, an offender who has got unscreened debris sitting in the middle of their lot along the corridor, we would take action on that in a different speed, I guess, in a, in a different way than we are now because, well, this is the area that we've decided these things apply, not necessarily areas where maybe we currently spend time trying to enforce, and then we get halfway through the process and everybody says, yeah, but nobody really actually wants to enforce it out here, or the neighbors are just as bad. And maybe, and so we're, we're kind of in a position where enforcing it against one person means enforcing it against 500. And so nothing ever gets done. So I guess I would say, if you want to consider the gateway corridor something less than what has been discussed, that is something we could consider. It can be expanded in future times. My expectation would be that we would do it as part of the master plan. So every five years, if we want to say, okay, these zones should be expanded, then we, we could do that then.
And I'd just like to add to that, it's not that we wouldn't, if somebody did complain about a screening or something and it had to do so with life, safety, health, I think at that point we would have to investigate it, then take action on that, right? In those areas that we don't, I'm not saying we don't care about, but we, because we get plenty of calls all the time, right? This person, this, this person, that. So I think we have to still investigate that. And then if it's, if it's just because there's a, something out there and it's not a safety hazard and it's not screened, then that area, it doesn't need to be screened. But I think we would, we wouldn't just say, oh, it's not in that area, we're not going to go look at it. You know what I'm saying? So.
I don't think screening would help with something that's not safe.
Yeah.
You know, and is now the time to make a decision, is, what is really the purpose of screening something? And should we switch it from, instead of a corridor, do you switch it to a business use? If a business use is a junkyard, it must be screened. If the, you know, is now the time to switch that because there's a lot of businesses that, you know, it could be detrimental to their business if they were screened because you may not be able to see what they have to offer. And, and, but they have to have a fence because of theft. So we have to ask those, it's some hard questions to get answered. We got to decide, is now the time to, don't, you know, make screening necessary and per business? I mean, how, how do you maneuver that?
Yeah, in some cases, the screening is actually more, or less eye appealing than, than the business itself. So I think, and I think Eric's right, there, we probably want to do is, is make this based on the type of business, on your business type and what you have.
That's really hard to do. I mean, the, the screening requirement is just for materials sitting on the ground, I mean, which is essentially going to be looking like a lot of junk. We're not talking about requiring a whole business to screen itself. The exception may be a junkyard. But for the most part, we don't go saying, you know, a whole business needs to screen itself. It's just the stuff they're storing.
So, so Mike, again, devil's advocate here, Dean, so if we have a new lumberyard come in, we're going to require them to screen that because that lumber sits on the, but then that also, as you're driving down the road, tells you that that's a new lumberyard?
Uh, yeah, under the code, they'd be storing their materials outdoors. The exception is if it's like available for retail sale, so if somebody's going and, Pulling stuff off the racks themselves versus, you know, the employees loading up in order. And I think that would be taken care of with signage and stuff like that, storefront stuff, right? I mean, but again, I get your point. I guess my thing is, is when people don't take pride in their property and they let it go, the way, the, the reason why we're requiring the screening, right? If you have a car dealership and they've got 20 spaces, let's say, well, 20 of those spaces are required because it's, that's what's required for the building, right? For the use of that building, right?
Parking spaces.
I'm just saying parking spaces. Well, now you go over there, now there's 20 cars that they want to work on that's staking up all those spots. So now they're parking their employees in other places, right? So now, now, now you have 38 cars sitting there. Well, then it gets to the point to where now they're going to say, well, we're just going to keep storing cars because they're getting cars, and they're getting cars faster than they can fix them. So now there's 58 cars there. Well, then some of those 58 cars turn into junk cars and they sit there for months. And that's where I think is where Dean's saying, that's the use of, we need to put a place to put those cars that are sitting there that don't, that they're not taken care of, those are the ones that are screened, right? We don't necessarily want to screen the cars that come to do business or the building, but there are certain situations, and I'm just, I just pick cars because it's easy, right? We see many car dealer, we see many maintenance shops that have many a car sitting in the parking lot and it looks pretty bad. Appliance repair, same thing.
Yep. So I guess we're, we're back to business types.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I'm 100% with you on that, right? Because it does look, I mean, you see it. But how far do we interject into the business practices type thing, right? I mean, that guy could be trying to get rid of them. You know what I mean? The owners won't come, they've abandoned them. And then the only way he can move them is when he, he's filing on the title, just because I know a little bit about the business and that, right? Which then takes time. And then going through DMV and doing all that, then you get the title, he takes possession of the car. I mean, we understand it and it's hard to get, you know, people don't pay us, so now it's on hock. You know, there's those things. I mean, so how, we can't really interject into the business practice of it, right? And I guess what I'm saying is, so you're going to say, I, I mean, I could, I could get on board with, we're only going to allow so many cars here, right? And if you're going to have more cars than that, you got to screen it. I could get in on something like that where we've set a, a standard or a guideline and they got to go into it. I mean, similar to like the ties, very similar to that. Like we said, hey, you got to be within this, these areas and all that. I could get there because I, I mean, looking at some of these car lots, I mean, I'd like to see at least some cars there, you know, to make it look like, I guess, not a, that bad a mechanic. But, I mean, but, I mean, so that's, I mean, if we could set a, we could set a standard in the code that way, limiting or putting amount on there, an acceptable amount, I guess.
I guess, I just don't know how you police the, the not caring portion of that. You can't. And I, you, you understand the business, right? I just know our code enforcement person is dealing with that right now on a piece of property. So she's taking the time to get that stuff through the, the DMV and all that stuff. So all that amount of time is going, that she's doing that, right? So I, I totally understand. And like I said, I'm with Dean, I don't know if you can specifically make it to car dealer or auto maintenance places and whatever, appliance places. I don't think you could do that because, right, I mean, do you agree, Dean? That's kind of what you.
Well, we can.
I guess you can.
We can do a lot of things. I guess what I'd say is if we start calling out specific items, we will inevitably miss some. Because, you know, right now, what we've created in the definition, and we still, I mean, we have people argue about that definition now, and it's about as broad as it can possibly be written. To say, you know, basically anything under the sun is a, is a material. Unless it's being offered for sale, or it's not there for more than a day, we're considering it stored. And so our option is to, I mean, we can convert that to be less inclusive, right? We can say, okay, it's going to be appliances and debris and loose articles or something like that. But then somebody's going to come in and it's going to be a, a business like this, a vehicle, or it's going to be something else. And it won't be included in that definition and then we won't have any ability to do anything. And so I, I guess it's a, it's a pick your poison moment in that case where we'll never be able to identify specific goods fast enough without essentially creating what we've created already, which is, hey, look, we're just going to be extremely broad and get anything and then require people to screen it.
The alternative, if you want to eliminate most instances of screening, is that you could go to the trouble of saying auto repair shops, junkyards, maybe lumberyards if you want them, but you can identify the handful of businesses that you see as being obvious problems and say, those things need this special kind of treatment being screening.
So I think, I think about an area in Sparks, from Glendale to Neal Road, and really from McCarran Clear over to Rock Boulevard. Pretty much that whole entire area in there, everything, with the exception of equipment rentals or equipment sales, or, you know, maybe the, the occasional tile place, everything is screened. That whole entire area is screened. Anything behind the storefront or around there is, is screened. Now, I don't know whether that's a requirement or if they're doing that just to keep people out. But if you think about it, that's, that's a zone in that area right over there where everything is screened, even Glass Mountain Block, which is, or Basalite, whatever you want to call them now. All of those areas right in there are all screened. And I, I, again, I don't know whether that's a requirement. That's something that maybe we should be looked into. Is, is it a requirement or this is what these people are doing to protect their investment in that area? But then when you come to a rental place or you come to an equipment sales place or whatever, that screening goes away, they're able to move their product out to the front and show it off so that people can see what's going on. And that's okay, you know, maybe we have some code requirements there. Okay, all right, if you don't have the screening, then you have to do such and such and such and such to keep this to where it does look like you give a damn.
And then it just goes back into the enforcement thing, so.
Well, we're back where we started, okay?
Yeah.
Public comment? Any other discussion? Item five, letter E, prioritization of Reno Highway zoning changes and review of strategies. Mr. Patterson.
So before we move on, I'm, we got the, the code changes like today and I only had an hour to go through them. So some things will work good, but there are some things that will create problems. And so Randy and I need to kind of go through these and kind of see how they kind of fit as far as implementing into the, making the code work.
Yeah, and along with that, yes, we did get it this morning. And it's just a hectic day, right? And again, I think the purpose of this was a big general discussion for the most part, right? Joe put a bunch of effort into this. Granted, this isn't, we don't want to say, okay, next month, we're going to go give this to the, get for approval, right? We don't want to do that. We just want to make sure that we have the discussion so we can work to a solution that's good for everybody. And that's, that's kind of where we want to go with it. So.
I think the, the best is Joe brought it up, what do we define as a corridor, right? And do all that. And I think it's the same as the zoning personally. I mean, it's how I look at it, on where we want to take the paintbrush, kind of scoop across this a little bit, right? So, I mean, if we said from, you know, Sheckler to, to the light out here, you know what I mean? And said that that's what we wanted to focus our zoning change on. I mean, I could get down, instead of trying, I, instead of trying to do the whole thing, I mean, we need to probably focus on that, which is going to be significant enough in those zoning changes, rather than going all the way out to Leaville and then, and doing Carson Highway and the rest of 50. I mean, I could personally, where we need to probably focus most is from Sheckler end because there's some zoning changes that got to be, I mean, that we need to look at and change at that point with a paintbrush through there.
So for the zone changes, I'd like to talk about some of the strategies for approaching this. And I think as Jack, Zach was implying, you know, kind of biting off which portions we want to start off with. So can you go to the next page? So close to the city, we have some problem areas, like you can see the dark red that is C2 zoning when the predominant uses are more like C1. Now, I guess one of the questions is, do we try to fix those areas? And I think there's one, the one along the Reno Highway on the north side, it's kind of next to Walmart, across from Walmart. Those are all commercial retail businesses, but some, for some reason, they're all C2 zoning. So is that something we want to try to tackle? Similarly, south of the highway, I guess it'd be behind Walmart on Taylor Place, there's a patch of red. And, you know, it's all pretty much just retail uses rather than, you know, C2 uses. Do we want to change those? In the case of the north unit, it's already developed as office space for the most part or stores, you know, that, that seems pretty straightforward. In the south unit, there, it's a little more rough, but they're all pretty much retail type uses. Do we want those properties to have the option to do some of the heavier type uses that you might find more commonly in an industrial setting? Is that appropriate? So it's those kind of questions. So in, near the city, it's mainly those, those red areas. You also note at the far, let's call it the east side of the picture, there's that industrial zone that's purple. And, you know, we, I think right now it is equipment sales or, oh, no, no, not sales, equipment storage for maybe the mine. It's at, you folks might know the property, it's right at Regan Place and Auction Road. Does that ring a bell with anybody? Maybe that's what it is, yeah. There, there's some big pieces of equipment, yeah. So, so, so there's no buildings there, I don't think. Maybe there's some, you know, structural, is there a shop? But the use that's operating there could also be operated as, as a C2 zone. So there's a red star to indicate, well, maybe we should think about making that C2 instead of industrial because industrial comes with a lot of heavy uses that may not be appropriate inside the city.
Real quick, Dean.
Yeah.
As we're talking about this, how big issue will it be if we make them all C1, like with the current owners or that, or that process?
The offices, probably they don't care. They're already doing what they're doing. It's all just going to be.
Yeah, but is it a notification to the owners that we're doing a change? Yeah, but is it a notification to the owners that we're doing a change? The county commissioners have adopted this, is that how that is, with no rebuttal back from them? I mean, what is that process?
It's, it's more flexible. I mean, when you, when you're doing things at a broad scale, the, the style of notice is different. But that doesn't prevent you from saying, hey, we think these property owners will be affected, and we should give them the chance to, you know, chime in on what's going on. And so you could, you know, make the effort to, to notify the people who are being changed.
Generally, we notify people who are being zone changed. I think something to note is, even if this was all changed to C1, even if it was one use that was non-conforming, it could still be non-conforming. But then you'd have, if a new owner came, they could continue the C2 use, but if they wanted to change use, it would have to be a C1 use. It wouldn't be allowed to be a C2 use again. And so that way, you know, you'd essentially have.
In my scan of these, none of these would be non-conforming. We would want to do a more in-depth look, but the initial review just indicated that they are all, would be conforming with the new zoning. Can you go to the next area, the next section? So on this picture, you can see it's kind of this tossed salad of red and orange zoning. It's a bit mixed up together. At the far east side is the turn where the highway leaves the railroad and goes directly west. That's about the same place as Marshall Septic is, where you saw a rezone, I think it was last month, yeah. And now, that's also, on the initial review, we noticed that a lot of these businesses are less retail-oriented and more have that more industrial feel. Now, there's obviously places that do retail activity. But in this case, our suggestion would be that after that turn, that the properties are more appropriately zoned, C2 commercial. Just to, and, and by doing that, it actually provides the owners more opportunities to have some different options of businesses. Now, in the mix of all this, you'll see that there are some white stars. Those are actually residential neighborhoods that, for some reason, were zoned C1. You know, as a planner, I have no idea why they would do that, because some of these are quite a ways off of the highway. Like the, the white stars, yeah, right there, thank you. Where Alexa's pointing with the, with the cursor. It's just homes. There's a couple with some home businesses, but that's okay. So why they made them zoned as commercial, I don't know, sorry?
If they built the homes, they never changed the zoning of it. But yeah, the ones on an actual paved street, that's all zoned industrial. Only because it's an employee that works with us, it's all zoned industrial.
Now, changing their zoning, I don't know, some people might object, because they think they got some kind of nest egg in a C1 zoning. But the reality is, their house is non-conforming. They can't expand it, they're gonna have trouble getting financing, all those things. We, we get, I don't know, I'd guess about an average of one request a year from somebody who has a house in a commercial zoning, and they have to ask us to change the zoning so they can get financing. If you look at the area around Soda Lake, north of the highway, it's the same thing. There are entire residential neighborhoods that are zoned commercial. You're gonna get one of them coming in for a rezone in a month, maybe two. It's the property with that, let's see, right in the A of Soda, directly west of that is a star, that's the property there. They have a farm and some homes, and they can't do anything because it's zoned commercial, so they're gonna come and ask you to change it. So, but, but the other, I don't know, 10 lots around it are in the same boat. It's just residential neighborhood zoned commercial. So do we want to take that up as a separate effort? Let's say a bite to chew in this rezoning effort? So that's something I would like input on. You know, we talked about Marshall Septic on the east side of the map. Do we want to take that orange strip along the highway and turn it into red, C2? Maybe that's a separate bite to work on. We could, of course, bring it all the way into Soda Lake. Now, the area around Soda Lake is a little different. You can see that it's quite in the mix of C1 and C2. Yet you look at the businesses, and they're pretty retail. So there's a question there. Do we want the intersection around Soda Lake and the highway to be like a retail node, which would be C1? It could just be red all the way through, C2. But there seems to be this pod of retail uses right around the intersection. And so one option can be to make it more consistent by making that area C1, in that case. So I would like some input on that, too. So you can see that the stars around the Soda Lake intersection are orange, in that case. Now, once you get west of Soda Lake, the recommendation would be, again, to have it go back to C2 commercial.
Is residential in there, too?
Yeah, on the south side of the highway, you'll see there's some patches. Yes, there, I'm sure there are houses here and there. The thing I was focusing on was where you have a whole neighborhood. But, but you're right, there are a couple patches where you might want to say, you know, this is just a couple houses, should they really be C2? You can, can leave them or make them C2, but those are more close calls, I would guess, I would say. So, and I think there's one more for the rest of the area to the west. Can you go down to the next one? So this one, it's pretty consistently red, but you'll notice that there are some patches of homes in the area. Now, previously, I recommended that, you know, residential neighborhoods, they're, they're E1, and well, maybe it's more appropriate for them to, I'm sorry, they're, they, they're near E1, so maybe it's appropriate for them to become E1, too. Out here, it's a little different. You have these little residential neighborhoods, but there's no E1 to be, to be next to. So in these cases, it's probably more appropriate to change them to be either A5 or A10, which is adjacent to them, because those ag zones, homes are not non-conforming. So it would do the same thing for them, it would just be using a different zone. So those are the, kind of the big subject areas that I'd like some input. And then we can maybe choose something to start with.
I guess I was thinking, instead of the E1, weren't we looking at going to like R1, R2, or like, we could do like an R5, which would?
R1 and R2 are for small lot zoning close to the city. And basically, you kinda need to have sewer and water. So that's really within the, the near, the near urban area.
I thought we talked about, like, re-changing, like, even some of the, that zoning for those other houses that are out, that didn't have ag, that were on like five dry acres, or something like that.
I, I'm not following, so maybe you can.
Confused, and when we talked about it before, but I thought, we, we have a lot of what we consider A5 and A10s out across there, right? But there's, there's no water, right? There's no nothing. Because, because of the parcel size, we called them A5s, and we called them A10s. And I thought we talked about doing a change to where we made that like an R5 or an R10.
That, that is a subject in, in the master plan, is along with this problem, there are other problem areas that are related to zoning, including the agricultural zoning. So there are some areas that are zoned A10, but there never has been farming. You can look at it, there's no marks on this, on the land from, in the air photos that you're looking at, showing, you know, there are fields or anything. It was just someone stuck it on there, even though there's no agriculture going on. A5 is more consistently farming. But in those cases, you'll see that there are whole areas of the county that have been, that where the farming has been split up into residential lots, five-acre residential lots, but it's no longer agriculture, unless maybe there's a little hobby farm going on there. So that, those kinds of things also need to be looked at. We were, we weren't just, we just weren't doing it right now. We're trying to tackle this idea first.
Dean, can you, and, you don't need to go back, but considering that section from, I guess it's where York Lane ties in, right there, going west towards Soda Lake. And you're talking about this, that, it looks like it's an R, what's the R2 question mark right there? You got a piece in there that's R2?
Yeah, there's two, there's two odd little parcels. They're operated together and owned together, but each parcel has a triplex on it.
Oh, oh, I know the place, yeah, okay.
And so it's like, maybe that should be R2, I don't know if there's one particular answer for it.
So I guess my question is, is we start to look through that, you know, it does make a lot of sense to, to move most of that to C2, because it fits the general area right there. You still, again, like we were talking about, though, you still have some residences down through this corridor, through here, that at this point right now, if you move them to C2, are we gonna, are we gonna create another problem like we had, and I think we've talked about this the last meeting, where those residences are now stuck in a C2, even though, and they can't do anything with their house or whatever? Is there a way to take those individually, pull them out? And then after, or at any point, they become, you know, the residence is left over, the change of use, then it automatically reverts to C2?
Yeah, there's some jurisdictions who handle it that way. You can do, first of all, I guess you'd take the idea that the C1 needs to be changed to C2, but then you can also go look and say, well, that's a house, that's just a house. Let's do it to the adjacent E1 zone. If you're doing that on the ag zone, then you change it to the adjacent ag zone. But in that case, there's E1 on the north side, so you can just use the E1. That makes them conforming for their own purposes. If sometime later, some business bought the property and wanted it to be commercial, they could ask for a rezone, and it would make sense.
Well, I think it might solve that problem that you're having up there on the west side of Soda Lake, on the northwest side of Soda Lake, right there, or behind the Wyman's Furniture in that area in there. You were able to change some of that back to what it really is truly being used as, which is a residence, or a farm, or whatever, and then have the stipulation that at what time it changes use, it then automatically reverts to C1, or C2, or whatever happens to be in that area at that time.
Right.
I mean, usually what that would be is if you would actually just zone it that way, and then you would have the non-conforming use would continue. Whenever that use changed, it would be, it would be that use. The difficulty is like, was expressed, is that if someone wants to expand that use, the residence, or get a loan on it, they can't do that. Which, I mean, may be appropriate if they're surrounded by C2. It may be something where we say, look, we don't want you to put more money into building a new house, or expanded house, in this area, because we want this to become C2. And so, I'm not sure that I can think of a way that we would be able to say, it's, we're changing your zoning to be E1 until you change your use, and then it will automatically become that. We could change it to E1, and then just, it would be surrounded by C2, and so the next purchaser would be able to say, I could probably get it changed.
Yeah, you couldn't do it automatically.
I'm sorry, it didn't mean that. But in fact, that, it's just like what Zach and I were looking at there, where you were talking about these white stars down there, that's all C1, where you've got these two white stars next to the conservation unit. That really is all residential right in there. There's, there is, and it's, it's C1. If somebody wants to start rebuilding their house, or whatever, are they gonna have problems getting financing? And they really are in a residential spot. And I'm trying to figure out at what point that C1 would actually begin to move south of the, say that, the first blocks that are right in there.
The stars are about the northmost spot where you'd want to, because those are, yeah. It would be south of the stars.
You know, and I, I mean, I understand why they want to go, why we'd like to go to C1 right there, but in the, in the interim, that's, that's basically residential.
Now, you're bringing up the idea of individual houses. Then you have to start thinking, all right, that's just one house. Do we, do we wanna give them the residential zone, or do we want to really encourage it to switch? And so that, I think Joe is kind of hinting at that.
I just see the difficulty in some of these people, that they, it's like the county's decided that you're not gonna go to C1.
Does anybody have a feel for what they think should be tackled first? Or the first two things, maybe?
Oh, I think we'd work on the ones in town. I mean, that, start there, on the ones in town, Dean, that are just right here.
Oh, okay, on the other screen, yeah.
I, I think that's the, where, I mean, you gotta start, and then start working your way out from there.
Yeah, sorry.
And maybe the ones that you really decide that need to be changed, maybe interview that owner, and like, this is what we're thinking, this is why we're thinking it. What concerns do you have? Do you have issues? Would you be for it? So we can sort of get a feel of what we're gonna meet, be up against, to get this to align with our thinking, and maybe propose what our thinking is. And then maybe we might could better gauge how we're gonna maneuver that.
Yeah. Now, relating to what the owners might think of it, Alexa, can you scroll all the way to the last page? So here's a, a listing of the things that are different between C1 and C2. So basically, everything that's in C1 is allowed in C2. So the, in short, the C2 allows you to do extra things, it doesn't take things away. So that's kinda how it's set up. So it, it could be the fact that you can do it in C1, but it's a special use permit, but in C2, it's a zoning review. It could also be that. But more often, it's something like tire retreading, bulk fuel storage. You see those in the middle, industrial stuff. Those are the things that are often not allowed in C1, because it's more retail-oriented.
Did we have that here? Was that my fact?
It was in the last time we talked about this, there, there was materials in it.
Oh, sorry, I'd like to have that, so I can get that.
These people, you may find a sense that, you know, C2 might be a common ground for everyone, you know? And then if it wants to be retail, then it can still be retail. And you sort of solve that problem at the same time, right? You can let those be in the C2?
I, I'm sorry, I could only hear part of that.
I said, if we sort of, you know, use C2 as the basic, like, this is what we wanna do, it sort of encompasses a lot of things that might just solve the problem across the board. the board. And then if the C, you know, the retail businesses, you know, could be under the C2 as well.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And that solves that, and then you don't have a bunch of checkerboard again, going right back down the Reno Highway.
Right.
Seems to me that that C2, the route to Yelena, really from, like Zach was saying, probably from, from Sheckler Cut Off all the way really to potential even.
Yeah.
Gumbo Drive.
But then like the stuff that's on Taylor Place, you know?
Yeah.
I would sort of like see that C1, because you don't, you know, it's the, the roadway's not sufficient for a bunch of heavy stuff going on.
Well, and then the.
And neither is Auction Road.
But you have a, you already have one there, you already have a warehouse distributions, storage and distribution right there. So it'd be a non-conforming, right?
Which one?
The old Pepsi building?
That's in the city, isn't it?
I think, I, I mean, it's old. I don't, I think you're meaning it's not being used right now.
No, it's being used. I think it's actually the, there's not a market, it's a store. I'm talking about Taylor Place. Taylor Place is, is the one that has sand limbs, it has all of that, well, it's got, where Slayton has this out of Egypt, that was the old Pepsi.
Oh, that building, yeah.
Warehouse facility with ability to park trucks in there. Basically what I'm saying is, is that is non-conforming versus one.
If I recall, you can do, let's see if it's in the list here, but it's, it's a beverage distributor and that was an item in our code and I'm, I, I don't think that one was different between C1 and C2, which, if, if it was the same, it didn't come on this list.
Yeah, it's in there. I was just looking at it, so it was warehouse storage and distribution.
Oh, I, I was talking about the Pepsi distributor. A beverage distributor is a separate, beverage distributor itself, so obviously Pepsi or Budweiser, those are a different listing in the code, by the way. So, yeah, just so you know. And, and I think they're allowed in either one.
Well, I'm just, that's all I'm saying, is there are a few spots in there where we're gonna have to juggle some things around, but.
Well, and then also. The out of Egypt, though, is obviously a retail, so it's allowed.
Yeah, it is an asset. The building itself is set up as a warehouse distribution.
Gotcha.
And just looking back at the first slide where the industrial is in town, right in, it's not in the city limits, but it's right on the edge and that's the old Macanon concrete place. So you've got an industrial parcel that's, sits right in there and.
Is that the one on Auction Road and Regan Place? Yeah. Now, now, assuming it stays that, it's also allowed in C2. So changing it to C2 doesn't negatively affect that particular use. So is that kind of a consensus among you three, is to start with the areas right in town?
Yes, and move west.
Start and move west.
And try to move, you know, like this and that way you don't have to jump around and get confused or anything.
I, I mean, really, honestly, after you hit Gumbo Drive, it's gonna be, you're really not gonna have a whole lot of decisions to make until you get to York Lane. So really, once you solve the city's issues, then some of this other's gonna come into play once we hit York Lane and start heading west.
Yeah, and you'll have another big chunk.
Yep, yep, yeah, yeah.
All right. Is there any public comment concerning this matter? None heard, we'll move to item agenda six, public comment. Is there any public comment? None heard, we'll move to agenda item seven, to the unofficial adjournment of an unofficial meeting. The time is 8:43 PM.